She's just about to throw me off of this. Planning Board. I'm not so bad with my computer. What happens?
It was like, oh George, you know, she doesn't say anything. You have to sign the comments.
I guess I did.
And you're going to work.
I don't.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regular Planning Board meeting on February 22, 2024. Madam Secretary, can you please call the board? Mr. Bernardo. Mr. Katz.
Here.
Mr. Lilly.
Here.
Mr. Hein.
Here.
Mr. Camudi.
Here.
Mr. Deal.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Romans.
Here.
Vice Chair Pressky.
Chair Pearson.
Here.
We also have Mr. Miss Gavin. And this is Mr. Paul Ferrero, and he is engineer from Boswell. Did I miss you? The mayor's here. Just for the record, the mayor is here.
Can everybody please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, a fair, democratic, and just as strong.
Madam Secretary, can you please read the compliance statement? The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied with respect to the meeting of the Verona Planning Board being held in person in the ballroom of the Verona Community Center. The time and date of this meeting were included in the annual meeting notice posted in the community center and sent to the official newspapers of the township, the Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger, at least 48 hours preceding the start time of this meeting. A public comment period will be held in the order it is listed on the meeting agenda, and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time. All meetings are recorded. Those wishing to speak during any public comment period should only provide their name and municipality. Street addresses are not required. Please be advised that should a member of the public choose to state their street address, it will not be redacted from this recording. Thank you. It seems that the oath of office has been given to our new Class 2 member, Kevin O'Sullivan. Welcome. We're so happy to have you.
Thank you.
Public participation. Any members of the public have any thing that they'd like to state? Please, okay, there are no members of the public present. Moving on to Letter F, approval of meeting minutes. Everybody has received a copy of the meeting minutes from the meeting held December 7, 2023. Has everybody had a chance to review? And appended to them are the resolutions that were passed at that meeting? Does anyone have any comments or corrections?
Commending on the holding of names and that's nice, that's very, see my name.
Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Motion.
Motion, mate? Second, okay. You got that? Mr. Heinmann? Mr. Camudi, seconds, okay. Do we need to take a vote?
No.
No. Members to approve, aye?
Aye.
Any disapprove or don't approve? And any extensions?
I will abstain due to my absence. I'll abstain.
Okay.
I will also abstain.
And Mr. Lilly. All right. The meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to a discussion, a brief discussion for subcommittee updates. The Master Plan Subcommittee has a member that would like to step back and a member that would like to step up. So there's going to be a switch out, right? The mayor would like to take your place.
Right.
Okay. So. Truth?
That is the truth.
Truth. Truth, yeah?
Yeah.
All right. So that's going to happen. We have a vacancy on the Site Plan and Subdivision Committee. I have graciously asked Kevin. Kevin's background is he is also an engineer, besides being the deputy manager of the township, and he accepted taking that role. If there are any other members that want to be on Architect, Site, or Landscape, please speak now because we can have up to four on any of these subcommittees. So if anybody wants to also throw their weight on a different subcommittee, please let us know. Okay. Moving along that line, we have an MS4 permit. I have been discussing some of this with our deputy manager and Mr. Ferriello.
Ferrero.
Ferrero. So easy without that IE. It would be so much easier.
Difficult to handle as I would have.
Okay. It's so much easier. So we have an MS4 permit that we're not, that we need to be compliant with, and part of that is creating a municipal stormwater management plan with the Master Plan Subcommittee. That's definitely top of our list to get done. Kevin, can you speak to any sort of schedule that you know that we can begin to deal with our planner and possibly our engineers in order to put this whole thing together?
Sure. I have had some preliminary discussions with Mr. Ferrero regarding the creation and the process for a municipal stormwater management plan. Boswell will be assisting with that. There is money still available in a bond ordinance that was established for the master plan. So we will be coordinating some of these early discussions with Boswell, and then as it becomes a more fruitful document for discussion for the planning board, we'll hold a planning board discussion at that point as well.
Well, the whole point of having the Master Plan Subcommittee is to have sessions with, even though it's a very formulaic portion of the master plan, I've looked through dozens of other townships. They basically all have the same thing with just data shift within the document, but generally speaking, it's a 36 to 40-page, or 30 to 40-page document, depending on the size of the township, and the data just changes. But still, we should look to at least a brief meeting to kick this off. We generally meet on Zoom. We have done so, very much so, at like the four o'clock in the afternoon timeframe, if that could work for the committee members, because that also enables Kathleen to sign on from her office without having to call her back in at seven o'clock at night and, you know, when we're all meeting from home, and on our computers, and just have like a brief kickoff session, what goals we're going to attain with this and who will be working with it. And then, I mean, isn't that how we did the master plan, pretty much?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any comments on this? Because I know that Jay and I spoke outside of this meeting about how we attack this and.
Yeah, no, that's 100% in line. You know, we'll just have a brief kickoff. We'll send it off to the professionals, get an idea of what your timeline is for getting that skeleton of the document, then the Subcommittee will take a look at it again.
Yeah.
Before we present.
Yeah, my suggestion would be is that DEP has a standard pro forma basically of this element, and I would hand that out as a homework before the meeting. So you kind of know what you like, you're going to be looking to fill it.
Yeah. That sounds good.
I can get that certainly.
Okay. Do we expect to bring our H2M planners in on this as well? To just give it a look, give it a look? Or do you think that this is more of an engineering standard?
I think it's just so technical that, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
You know, I think in the end, it would be something obviously that they will review, but I don't think as far as.
Drafting it, right.
Yeah, I don't think there's really a reason for that. I think.
I certainly would like to have them review it.
Yeah, review is true, but too many cooks in the kitchen.
Okay. All right, so we'll just get back to our regular uninterrupted Zoom meetings, all over again. Does that satisfy?
Yeah. What are we, what are we looking at in terms of timeframe for the kickoff? Like margin after our next planning board meeting?
That's a trick question because I don't know when your next planning board.
It's the fourth Thursday of every month.
Get you the DEP format.
Okay.
And I think it'd be a good idea for everybody to look at that. I can send it to Kathleen.
Yes, that would be the best place to do it.
And you can look at it and kind of formulate the questions, and based on that, we can set the meeting that we want to have.
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, we don't want it to get away from us. We already feel like we're, you know, kind of behind a little on this, so.
Everybody is.
All right. And, yeah. All right, so is there any other comments or questions about any of the other subcommittees before we move on?
Sure.
Okay. Moving on to, we have no resolutions this evening, and we're going to move right on to consistency determination, and I'm going to then hand it over to you. And thank you very much for.
Okay, no problem. First, I will maybe steal Greg's thunder a little bit, and it's, the Planning Board's purpose in this instance is to determine whether or not the proposed ordinance is inconsistent or technically it's not inconsistent with the master plan.
How about consistent?
Well, well, you see, not inconsistent. I'll tell you why it's not. I'll tell you why you say it's not inconsistent, because I can virtually assure you that your master plan doesn't say everything in these ordinances. Therefore, it's not consistent, but conversely, it's also not inconsistent. And that's why you make the not inconsistent finding, regardless absurd that sounds like it is.
Is your mic on?
I don't know.
Maybe it is now, okay. So that's why I think the not inconsistent finding is, like I said, it's absurd, but that's really what it needs to be. There are two ordinances that are in front of you. One of the first one is Chapter 55, where the Stormwater Management section of the code is being repealed and replaced with a new section called Stormwater Management Controls and Requirements. And the important word in this is controls, because this is the ordinance that sets the design standard for stormwater management in the township. The MS4 permit, which is municipal separate storm sewer system, is a permit issued by the state to the township, to every town in the state, and one of the obligations is that you update your ordinance to be consistent with the state requirements under NJAC 7 Colony, which are the stormwater management rules. And that's a minimum standard. Now, briefly talk about the minimum standards, and then I'll talk about where Verona has gone beyond that. The minimum standards basically are fundamentally the same as they were, as they have been for major development for some time, where you have to address water quality, groundwater recharge, and rate reductions. The difference that happens is, first off, a couple of years ago, the green infrastructure requirements came in, and that's already in there, and that's also codified in these new regulations. And the other thing that's been done is that the design storms have been modified, because it's been recognized by the state that what's the rainfall for the 210 and the 100-year storms aren't the same as they were when those storms were first established in 1999. So there's a requirement, first and foremost, that you increase the design storms to what is considered the current 2024 storm. And that's roughly 5% greater for those different storm events, and it varies depending on where you are in the state. Furthermore, there's a second analysis that you have to do, is to make sure the stormwater works for the projected year 2100 storm. That increases those design storms by, depending again where you are, between 20 and 50%. So it's a substantially much larger storm that needs to be controlled. So that's, that's the overarching state standard. Now, where Verona has gone above and beyond this are in two ways. The first one is redefinition of what a major development is, consistent with the Watershed Institute recommendations. Formerly, under the state regulations, it's an acre of disturbance or a quarter acre or more of impervious surfaces. And that has actually a look back to 2004. Someday, I will tell you how I'm going to figure that out, to see if somebody disturbed more than an acre of their land cumulatively since 2004, but that's what the requirement is. Under the Verona definitions of major development, flip to them here. The major development is, the area of disturbance is down to a half an acre, and the impervious surface is 5,000 square feet. So that, that basically halves the state.
They existed. They were carried over from the ordinance.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's true, but that's where Verona is above and beyond what the state standard is. Another thing that's been added is something that I've carried around with me for 20 years, and I had conversations with Jessica in the town, is the concept of a minor development. Because 5,000 square feet of impervious on an 8,000 square foot lot is really a lot of impervious before you have to do anything. So there's a standard that's been developed for what is called a minor development, and that is defined as 400 square feet or more of new impervious surface, or 2,500 square feet or more of disturbance. The standards there are relatively benign, kind of rain gardens, dry wells are the green infrastructure requirements that are recommended for those projects, and not, like I say, I've been doing these for well over 20 years in many different municipalities. And what it does, it really helps cumulatively what happens in a neighborhood and requires some regulation. The 2,500 square foot disturbance number is in there because sometimes you have a disturbance on a property that's not more than 400 square feet, somebody's regrading their yard, and you can get mud running onto the neighbor's property. So the standard for that is a requirement for soil erosion and sediment control like silt fence. That's what you have to do if you have 2,500 square feet of disturbance. The reason why we've put that in there is because under the overarching regulations under the County Soil Conservation District, the threshold is 5,000 square feet. Again, that's a big number in a town with lots the size of Verona. So that's really what the nuts and bolts are of this ordinance. We can get into technicalities about some of the calculation methods that have been thrown out and are no longer acceptable, but your eyes will really glaze over very, very quickly. I can assure you of that.
I think the only other thing that could be brought to light is that this ordinance has been enhanced to give the town administrators much more control and oversight over what is installed, especially on major developments. So every year a major development, and this is a new section, will have to register their BMPs or their stormwater management mechanisms, whatever they are, whether they're green infrastructure or they're gray, and pay a fee and have an inspection and have a report drafted for that inspection to ensure that their stormwater management is in working and good order, so that it doesn't need to undergo any kind of upgrades or service in order to ensure, again, against flooding.
And that's, and that's really important.
Yeah.
Fundamentally for two reasons. The first is the obvious, that stormwater management facilities need to be maintained. I've spoken to a number of groups a number of different times, and they always tell me, well, we've been doing detention basins since the 60s, and none of it works. And I counter with, go out and look at them. They don't work because they're not maintained. It's like they don't exist. So you have all this development for the last 60 years with no stormwater management. That's fundamentally what's occurring. The other reason why it's important is because under your MS4 permit, the township is required to make sure that all these facilities are maintained. By incorporating the ordinance like this, you kind of save a step. You create a mechanism by which it puts the obligation on these BMP owners to report to the municipality and make sure that's done, and that allows you to check that off your list so you can get that done. Madam Chair, I just have, it's unfortunate, I've overwired things. Minor development includes definition of a major development. So in other words, 400 more square feet of new impervious surface could be considered. So let me go back. If you have more than 5,000 square feet of regulated impervious coverage, okay, or of new impervious coverage, that fits the definition of both major and minor. So I think there should just be, just so that no one can come before us and argue. You could say and less than 5,000. Exactly. And you could say in less than a half acre. Right, so that would be a suggestion that I would suggest that the board makes, the council.
How do you clean that up?
Just by having Greg put that to the council, and it can be, it's a minor change that can be incorporated upon adoption. Actually, the easiest way a minor development is a development, comma, other than a major development, comma, that results in.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the simplest way.
That's fine. Does anyone have, take issue with that? Would you consider that a substantive?
No. No, not at all.
Thank you. Good, because I don't want them to have to go through this whole thing all over again, the council. They've already done first reading.
Right.
Okay. Did you overlaw or anything else?
No, that's, I can see somebody, you know, coming before us and with an application saying, no, it fits the definition of a minor, and therefore we want it to be treated, even though it's.
Right, so they wouldn't be held to the same level.
Exactly.
I understand. Does anyone else have any particular questions on the ordinance?
Just to confirm, aside from updating some of the tables, the stormwater events and those triggers, were there any other substantive changes?
Well, there are that are deeply buried in there that are pretty technical in nature. For example.
Going through, I mean, the sections look pretty similar. I didn't go through word by word.
I can tell you, for example, it used to be that engineers would design projects using what was called the Modified Rational Method, which engineers love because it makes the stormwater management systems about 25% the size of if you use the T, what is called the TR-55 or methodology, excuse me. So what the DEP has done is they've taken that out. You cannot use the Modified Rational Method for sizing detention basins anymore. You can still use the Rational Method for sizing pipes, because that's really the only method to use for that, but you can't take this shortcut and make these small basins, because I've seen plenty of them, and I've always had problems with them, but I couldn't do anything because that's, it was permitted under the regulation.
So these are all just mostly technical changes?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
We did change a couple of, I mean, again, it was a little bit substantive. We added the terminology from TWI, the Retention Standard, which is.
Yes.
Basically, one half of the projected 2100, two-year storm, times the change factor.
Right.
Which is, I think, 1.18, which comes out to 3.4, 2.04 inches that has to be withheld on any new or remaining, if it was a redevelopment and they had some impervious that wasn't moving and staying, and if they add new, all of it has to be controlled for that. So we did.
So it's not just the change, the whole?
Everything, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's a definitely good thing, especially because we also hold redevelopment has to conduct stormwater. In the minor developments, we changed gallons to inches.
Yes.
Okay, for retention purposes, and if a minor development goes over 1,500 square feet of new impervious surface, they must soil test to ensure that they themselves, their own basements and their neighbors' basements, don't become overwhelmed runoff from all of that new impervious surface, and the soil is capable of the retention, whether it's, you know, a rain garden, the soil can actually infiltrate the water that will be running off, based on the entire, basically, you even said it in one of our work sessions. You said, it's not just anything above 400. The 400 that kicks it off.
Right.
Is included in whatever new impervious is added.
If somebody puts in 600 square feet, they don't control 200.
They control 600.
They control 600. And I can't tell you how many times I've had that argument.
Might I suggest, because that is a confusing thing, and I don't know whether it would be a substantive change to just correct the language on that?
Clarification is not substantive.
Okay, can we clarify that, you know, 400 new square feet may be the trigger, but that the entirety of the impervious added, including the first 400 square feet that trigger it, are necessary to include in your calculations?
Let me find the section on minor development.
It's like page 22 or something, I think. Section 7.
Well, what it says is, for each square foot of increased impervious surface. Right. I think it's already there.
Increased?
Increased, yeah. For each square foot of increased impervious.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ensure that.
I think it's there.
Okay. So, and there are some documentation and maintenance plans that minor developments also need to hand in?
But it's, it's much more abbreviated.
Oh, yeah, than the major development.
The idea is not to burden people, but also to make it responsible.
But I mean, for these additional, I mean, you are going to need an engineer for this, right? So you're putting in a patio.
Certainly, once you get above 1,500.
You're putting in a patio, you trigger the 400.
Right.
You're going to need an engineer.
Maybe, but maybe not. You might just.
What we're talking about is to create some stereotypical calculations and those sorts of things that can be handed out with these permit applications, so the resident can do it. For example, I have one town that what they do is they say for every square feet needs a drywall that's so many inches deep.
Right. But I mean, they'll need someone to do the soil testing.
Well, that's once you get over 1,500.
Oh, okay.
I think about that.
Yeah, I know. My concern was the 400 trigger, it's like you're doing something minor, and it goes from just hiring a contractor to okay.
Right, and that's why, that's why we talked about creating these templates.
Yeah. Legal and procedural question here. Clause number seven requires you to record a conservation easement or deed restriction.
Absentance eight ordinance.
Can we discuss the complexity and administrative burden to the homeowner of, you know, let's assume that I, you know.
Well, that's for major development, right?
Absolutely.
Section seven, under 150, page 23.
Sorry? Page 23, did you say?
Yes. Does the state ordinance require that restriction for minor development? I mean, if we're, if we're defining the minor development as not part of the state code, do we need to actually force someone to record encumbrance against their property?
The answer to that is no.
Which number is it?
Seven.
Seven, table, it's under table eight.
Well, the problem is, is if somebody does put green infrastructure on site, that needs to stay there because it's basically a natural pipe or a natural holding cell, a natural.
The idea is to keep people from filling in a rain garden or putting a pool where the drywall was.
Exactly.
But what is then, let's assume that you want to move it to the other side of your lot, if you do want to relandscape or something like that. I'm just, you know, that's the question for me, is that, is that a bridge too far to require someone to encumber their title?
Yeah. And that.
You have, I mean, I can see making someone maintain it, but what if you rip the patio out?
Well, it says other acceptable legal measures. I mean, if they're getting site plan approval, it's just.
Well, it wouldn't be site plan approval for a single-family home with a small addition.
It may not need to go before a land use port.
True.
I just worry that if there isn't some sort of protection of that area, that people could just pave over it or put basketball court, you know, whatever.
Well, we're talking about a 20 by 20-foot patio triggering you to have to go and record a conservation easement under title.
Plus, if you're not selling it, no one's going to prevent you from paving it over or changing the conservation easement. Maybe a way, and I'm just thinking out loud a little bit here, because I recognize the issue. I've heard it before. Most of my towns do not require the filing of an easement. But perhaps a way to do it is you have the owner sign an acknowledgement that they have this that gets recorded in their block and lot folder in the town with the map attached to it. So it basically becomes something enforceable by the town and recorded in the town. So if somebody comes in for a permit to put a swimming pool where the drywall was or this rain garden was, then somebody's aware of it, and it doesn't get lost.
So would it just simply need to be a recorded easement with the township for owner?
No, it would not be a recorded easement.
The town can't record easements.
So how do we...
Well, that's...
It would be like a notation on your tax card, right, like the signing.
And it would be something that would develop with the township attorneys, as is the right word, and everybody would sign the same document.
So my question is this, what Greg just brought up. You know, somebody purchases the property, and they're like, "I got an idea. We're going to put a pool and an outdoor kitchen and everything." And they put an application into the zoning officer. Does the zoning officer look at the tax record and say, "You can't do that in that little area?" So now we have a miscommunication problem.
Well, I don't know how the township works, but...
There's a way to accomplish that.
And I don't know how your filing system is, but I know, gentlemen, what I will do is I'll pull out the block and lot file for that town that'll have, for that specific lot that has old permits and old information.
Right.
And just to see that. And if this becomes, you know, a document on the top of it, the zoning officer, I'm assuming, would review that kind of information.
Right, because you would do an Oprah request all the time with real estate, and all the permits come up, and whether they're closed or open. So it would be, where are the permits recorded, in the construction office?
There would have to be a new chip added to this particular type of...
No, but the permits, if I do an Oprah request, the construction office pulls all the permits, lets me know whether they're open or whether they're closed.
On the construction.
Right. So it still has a list of all closed permits as well.
Right. The question is if there is... If there is one listing that you can, that will show everything. Like when they have to go look for an Oprah, they'll go in and pull the file, and maybe it's all in there. So then if there's a zoning permit, it's not on their side, it's on another side. So there's not like one location that I think, that I know of, unless someone can correct me, that shows everything that's been permitted, opened and closed in totality. Construction will have theirs, but you have to, you assume that if construction has it, there was something previously on the zoning side that was done.
So there's separate files for construction versus nothing?
Right. So it goes to zoning first, because everything, most things, not everything, has to have a zoning permit approval prior to going to construction.
So once it's done, where does that permit reside?
The zoning permit will reside in zoning, and the construction permit resides in construction.
But you always, I'm not questioning, I'm asking, but if someone wants to come in and build a patio, okay, they have to seek a permit, okay? They apply for a permit to build a patio. Then both offices do a back, do a historical check.
No. What? Right now, it just, when they submit their zoning, they submit zoning application first with any plans, survey, anything that they're doing. Currently, part of the process is not, there is no historical check as part of the process right now. Obviously, something we can put in and probably should put in.
I think, I mean, I'm surprised that there is not a historical check.
So let me ask you this. If, right now, when somebody comes before a land use board or does, has a closed-out permit, regardless of whether they had to go to a land use board or not, that closed-out permit stays with their file, yes?
Yeah.
Perhaps, you know, every time I see an application, when you send it to the VEC, it says, "Do you know of any history of any easements or da-da-da?" And 99.9%, no. And if it's a new owner, I have no idea if they went to the Board of Adjustments ever, any history of another variance sought, I have no idea. There are new owners, and they kind of don't really know what happened in the past of that house. So maybe we, when somebody gets it, that has to stay with, duplicated with your department and the construction department. Right. So obviously, we're aware of the fact that we've had multiple zoning officers in a period of time.
Multiple last week, right.
Yeah, multiple last weekend. And I'm currently doing both, as of the last two weeks. So any process that was there went from Mike DeCarlo to Boswell to Paula to me. So there's really not even a lot of historic... Did I miss one? Oh, yes, I did. Mr. Epps, I did. So, but that is something that...
How difficult would it be for you to do that?
I don't know yet.
I mean, just so...
But no, but certainly it's something that, right, we can, we can look at the historical part of it. We can add that to it, sure.
Because certain...
Moving forward, at least when this law gets passed, when they install some kind of green infrastructure should go into their zoning file. Right. So anytime they come back to do another improvement, it's there.
And I will tell you that even if you had an easement recorded,
Right, that's...
unless you had the same check, it doesn't matter.
Right. It would be missed by the town.
Because the zoning company is not going to go to the county courthouse and pull the deed.
Right.
Right.
So that's why...
That's just another expense.
And as I was saying before, the homeowner who recorded it isn't going to say, "Oh, there's an easement on it." So it has to, it has to be. But going back to the substance of this...
How do you, so is this, this would be a substantive change, wouldn't it?
What, is any of this policed by the requirement for annual maintenance reports?
There's not the same requirement for minor development as there is for major.
Right. We, we're going to be creating some kind of a, like, something, make a download from the township's website for maintenance of smaller installations for minor developments.
Again, going back to the, you know, 21-by-20-foot patio.
That happens.
Do we want to burden the homeowner with filing an annual report on the stormwater?
We're not asking them to do that.
Right, okay.
That's not in there for minor.
Okay, that's, then, yeah, we're trying to figure out, okay, so that doesn't apply for minor.
No, it doesn't.
So the suggestion, I think, is that seven should say, "The stormwater management feature shall be protected from future development by acceptable measures." Okay, or by measures, by measures, or legal measures.
By the town.
I think the language is pretty broad. I think it gives the town the flexibility to fashion an administrative remedy to the management.
And maybe you don't even want to change it, because there could be some potential...
It says "or."
It says "or," and there could be some potential projects where an easement really is needed.
Yeah. So do you want to leave it as is and not mandate?
That's a good point, Paul.
You can leave it as is.
Or other legal measures.
Right, okay.
And the other legal measure, the default one, will be, again, will come up with a form that the owner signs, gets attached to their plan, gets filed with zoning, filed with construction, and then it can be found in the future.
I'm done with that one.
All right.
I'm done with that.
So that, so will there be a recommendation from the planning board that an administrative measure be the primary measure unless there is a definitive reason to justify a request for an easement?
Do you want to just, are you doing that?
Well, I think that's outside of...
I know. We're really looking at consistency, but I...
No, no, we're supposed to also comment, you know, make comments on the ordinance.
Okay.
So I think it's outside, I think it's a separate little, a separate little section in what is presented to the council.
Yeah, commentary in the consistency.
Right, exactly.
So who's going to be sending the memos?
I will.
Okay. Can you do it by tomorrow?
Uh, no.
I'm asking because they have to, they need a 10-day posting.
I'm having surgery.
No, they don't, they don't have a 10-day posting.
Some excuse.
I don't think there needs to be a 10-day post.
Yes. Ms. Kirin and I spoke earlier, and she said that she needs to advertise this 10 days in advance because it's...
Yeah, but that's okay, but they're...
There's no substantive changes to the ordinance, either changes that would be upon adoption.
So how's this? They're not going to be hearing this till the 11th of March, at which time it'll be second reading.
Yeah, it only has to...
And we just get the primary memo to her.
I just can't do it tomorrow, yeah.
Well, I have surgery.
But the, and it's minor, it's all fine. But the, it's cosmetic, I have my nose done. The, the second reading is just, the ordinance itself is advertised the way it was written, which I think is backwards in New Jersey state law. We've talked about this before, because then there can be dialogue to change the ordinance immediately before it's passed, as long as it's not substantive, but, so, okay.
At this point, we are leaving that language in.
Yep, absolutely.
But we're just saying that the primary...
Your recommendations...
Recommend that a system be put in place, that a process be put in place, so that if there is a second application, the prior development is addressed.
Right. The installation of the stormwater measure
Right, exactly, yep.
is not covered over by pavement.
Yep.
Any other questions about the substance of the ordinance? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, just a couple, just page one, the applicability. It gets all residential, major, redevelopment. Is the municipal township covered in that?
Yes.
Okay. So if we build a new police station and...
That's right.
Yeah. We have to do this.
We can't...
Some might argue that municipalities exempt from their own regulations. Would not have that argument with your chair.
You know, I've seen it in practice in this town, so. Great, that's good enough. Second, just along the lines of alignment with the master plan, which I think we sort of made, you know, polished smooth, so there's not many hooks to go on. There's a couple instances, I think, page 23, and maybe it was page 5, where there are some, you know, you know, green infrastructure, the old standards, yeah, let's see. That's page four and 23. Rain gardens, swales, like, things are listed, but that's not a comprehensive list? Like, we issued that in our master plan? Are we okay with having these listed here?
We are giving residents a list of suggestions from Rutgers. If you're looking at page 23, that list comes from Rutgers, and we actually give them projected sizes for their rain garden in order to accommodate the stormwater, you know, runoff.
Ah, so...
These are suggestions, they, if, again, what Mr. Heineman said, if what they're doing is going to be very big, subdividing a piece of property and building a new house on a vacant lot.
Yeah.
They are going to need to get an engineer to install the proper measure. And this gentleman or somebody from his firm will have to review those numbers and ensure that they're going to work.
So in this case, when these suggestions are listed, there's for the minor developments, and you're telling me these are helpers?
These are helpers.
Yeah, rather than helpers of lawyers, of developers, and, you know...
We actually, just so that you know, there is no suggestions for green infrastructure in the state ordinance. They just say green infrastructure, because everybody who has to deal with these ordinances knows how to do that.
Yep.
So even in the state code, there are no suggestions. We handheld a little in the minor development section.
So on purpose?
On purpose.
Okay. Okay. And you like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So, Madam Chair, I think for the, Paul, do you want to go to the next one, or we want to do consistency on this one?
I think you should do both separately, because you may have different...
Okay. The sustainability element goals in our master plan.
Yeah.
Number three, improve resiliency and sustainability. A, encourage the use of green stormwater infrastructure. B, address issues with flood-prone properties.
I mean, every section of our master plan discusses stormwater. It's in circulation for recommended bump outs to install green infrastructure, to add impervious, I'm sorry, permeable surfaces to our big parking lots. It's obviously in the land use section.
And just to go backwards.
It's in every section.
Finding that is not inconsistent. Nowhere in your rational plan does it say, "Don't reach..."
No, I was just pointing at a specific one, just to kind of move it along.
I think, I mean, does anybody think that this ordinance, after all the discussion we've had on master plans, is somehow not consistent with what... As a matter of fact, I just want to quote, one of these sections, one of the goals was to redo our stormwater ordinance, which is what we're doing right now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
General question?
I'm sorry?
What, so if we're taking out the old one, putting this in, what's the diff?
The diff is this is going into our zoning code. And the reason behind that is because I think a lot of the minor developments kind of slipped by the wayside without actually being overseen and ensured that people were going to follow up and do the right thing. This, as I said earlier, gives, provides our administration with a system of checks and balances, because we're just becoming more and more flood prone, and we're just getting worse and worse. So I don't have to, two of our residents sitting at this table live pretty damn close to a river. So actually, more than that. Yeah, right, that east.
And nothing in the old law is taken out?
No, this is everything mandated and then some.
Good.
I mean, I think it's totally in line with our master plan. It's exactly what our master plan seeks to have the township do. And it's, like I said, it's a more strict ordinance. So that, I will be voting pro-consistency. Does anybody have any comments or any questions that would draw away from that? I would like to make a motion to send the Burnetown Council that we find 2024-04 consistent with our master plan. Ordinance 2024-04.
I'll second.
Mr. Katsoff? Mr. Katsoff, second?
Katsef, by the way.
Yes.
There's no O in my name.
Yep.
It's an E.
What's that?
It's Katsef. There's no O in my name.
Okay, Jeremy. I'm just going to call you Jeremy. I've been calling you your name for two years, or a year now. Sorry, I didn't mean to mispronounce tonight. So do we take a vote?
For discussion purposes.
Yeah.
Should the motion be to find consistent or to find not inconsistent?
I would like to say consistent. It's a consistency finding. I...
Well, it's, the statute says that the governing body, that the planning board shall make and transmit to the governing body within 35 days, everybody knows, a report including identification of any provisions in the proposed development regulation which are inconsistent with master plan. So our transmittal is that we have found nothing that is inconsistent with the master plan.
Okay.
Paul had suggested before.
Change the verbiage of my motion. Do you second?
Yes.
Do we take a vote?
Yeah, you can hear.
Okay. Mr. Katsef?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Osale?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Timbora?
Yes.
Sheriff Pearson?
Yes.
Since he went through the trouble of explaining to us, I had...
I really don't care.
I didn't want it to go to waste.
I have a question before we move on. The second part of the ordinance will not be part of the zoning code. It will be reverted back into the general code.
Okay.
I just...
Yes, right.
I just wanted to...
It's still a development regulation, so it's still, we still do the determination.
Okay. Do you, I mean, the only thing that changed in there was the definition of an impervious surface
Right, just from the 10,000-foot level is... Right. Just from the 10,000 foot level is the D E P has a certain number of mandated ordinances that the municipality must have under your stormwater permit. This is really what it is. And as the chair said, uh, it just makes it clear that an artificial turf field is considered an impervious surface under the D E P interpretations. And now it is codified in your ordinance. This, this, these, this is a section that talks more about water quality as it relates to wildlife feeding and littering and illicit discharges and those sorts of things.
I, I actually just have one question for you. Did the D E P update this sort of information with an MS4 permit update?
This was the same. There's, there's, there's two ordinances that, um, need to be adopted that are separate from this.
Okay.
Um, one is a true removal ordinance, but you already have one, so that's, that's going to be okay. And the second is for private salt storage.
Which they already adopted at the council level.
So the.
So this one is in line with what the D E P would ask?
Yes.
Okay.
It's exactly the same.
Any discuss, this actually exists in our general code right now. It was article one of the whole thing. I have no comments on it.
Yeah, if, if that's the only change, like I said, I looked through it, pretty much the same. I mean, unless there's any discussion, I'd like to make a motion to find that this is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Jason, I'll second that. If, if, if any, if, if there are no other questions or comments on it, that's just been, a motion was made by Mr. Heineman and I seconded. Yeah. Mr. Katsef?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Timbora?
Yes.
Sheriff Pearson?
Yes.
All right.
And frankly, I would like to thank the chair and Kevin for the many hours we spent on the phone going over with this. Usually, I'm the stormwater geek in the room. I felt a little bit marginalized because, because there was somebody who seemed to care about it more than me, which is unusual. But, uh, it was, I think it was a very collaborative process and we got to a very good place.
Well, it was, I, I look forward to working with you again.
Mr. Ferrero, before, I'm sorry, before, and we do appreciate the time and the effort that the chair puts into all this. She is enthusiastic and, and it's appreciated. Sometimes she can be a little bit of pain in the ass.
That's.
But when I say that.
You, you've been around longer than me, so you can say that.
I really do because her enthusiasm, her dedication is, is incredible.
Put it there, I don't. It'll, it'll be good evidence later.
Mr. Ferrero, when I had brief discussion before the meeting, and I just want to bring this up. Jess, I had sent to you the legislation with regard to the new affordable housing obligations.
Yes.
Um, the new affordable housing obligations are severe.
Yeah.
Um, severe, severe. And I was, I asked Paul, how are we going to be able to meet the affordable housing obligations and comply with the stormwater management requirements, given that the town is virtually developed? And it's something that, you know, that the planning board and the governing body are going to have to start, in my view, start reconsidering height, permitted height in town, unfortunately. Parking underneath, if there's going to be, you know, two stories above, above a garage. Because there's no way that there's enough land area that is going to be, that, that developers are going to be able to meet the stormwater management requirements and the affordable housing requirements. So it's just something that I'm just throwing out there.
I, I was part of a panel discussion last year for redevelopment attorneys. And I was there with an attorney, the guy who wrote the flood hazard area rules and the stormwater rules, and a retired guy from the D E P. And the two guys from the D E P said, you know, every time these new rules come out, when it was the wetlands rule, when it was a new flood hazard, everybody said the world was ending. And they say, they said the world didn't end. I said, no, the world did not end. It just got a lot smaller. And that means taller. That's, that's fundamentally what is, what the shift is going to have to be. There's less land available for development.
So which.
And greater mandated levels of development.
So which rule trumps which? Do you simply, so that if you're, if you're.
You have to comply with both.
Right, okay. But it's, let's assume that you have a need for a certain amount of affordable housing and the only way to develop it is, you know, prohibited by your stormwater management ordinance. Um, do you have to bend your, your zoning regulations at that point in time or does?
Exactly.
Absolutely. You have to bend your zoning regulations and go up. It's already happened to some degree with litigation, you know, that, that the town is basically a head of. But it, these, you know, these are inseparable object of the immovable, whatever that's, that saying was, I haven't tried to use it in years, immovable object and then, somebody help me out here.
Irresistible force.
Irresistible force, thank you, Paul. Um, you know, we, something is going to have to change. And the town is going to have to build affordable house, period. And if, as Paul said, if the world gets smaller and you go up, then that's what's going to have to happen. So it's just something to, you know, to know that it's.
Well, the, the question I have kind of relates to Councilman Roman's question. If we zone particular areas to allow for higher than normal regulations in, in certain areas, then they could be met in areas where it could be acceptable or appropriate for a slightly taller than normal building. Whereas if we, but we can still maintain our height regulations in other areas of.
Yeah, yes. That's the way, that's exactly what you'll do.
Right. Absolutely.
You're not going to allow six story buildings everywhere.
But that's, that's my point. I mean, that would just be horrific.
No, but it's something that is going to have to be addressed because otherwise.
I, I totally understand what you're saying. I get it.
Right. Alex, I don't know if you've seen the new proposed.
I have interest to read them, yeah.
I'm sorry. And Chris, I don't know if you've seen, you know, so.
It's, it's frightening.
And that's not spot zoning, that's zoning for.
The zoning is being thrown out the window to accommodate, to accommodate.
A lot more than justice.
And then there's another ordinance, another law that has come out that, that says that you can have accessory structures on, on any single.
Accessory dwellings.
As a right.
As a right.
And that, by the way, will screw with the entire stormwater ordinance. That's ridiculous because then you're adding basically another house on a single common property and then you need offsite parking and more driveway. And now you're just going to flood every neighbor and, and everyone downstream. So that just came out of committee. That law just came out of committee and I sent it to Greg with like, you know.
Yeah, it's, versions of that have been kicking around for a while and it's, it's frightening. I will tell you one thing, going back to the, to the overall affordable housing and the idea of, you know, you might have to have areas in town where the buildings are taller. Um, what I can tell you is this, and this is an argument I had way back when people were talking about cell towers. If you say every place in town is no good for a tall building, it's prohibited everywhere and it's equally good everywhere. So you have to pick your spots where you're going to have that.
Absolutely.
All right. What's your thinking, Katsof?
Yeah.
Um, does anybody have any new business or any?
I have a quick question, in fact. Um, there had been a previous confidential matter that's come across to this board a couple of times. Um, do we know what the status of that is? Do we expect that to come back?
Yes. Yeah, I can answer that. It's, um, the, um, matter was presented in closed session to the council and we're kind of waiting, um, you know, it's in process. Nothing has been settled.
Okay.
Um, but it's been presented to the council. Council has, um, not fully deliberated it yet. So it's, but it's still, uh, on the front burner.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
You got it.
Good night, everybody. Nice to meet all of you.